Next year, we with any like next year, we will be meet in person and have a meal somewhere together. So we'll forward to that again. So I'm just going to remind all of our members, please mute yourselves now. And and then if you have a question, you can either raise your hand or do something to to show that you have a question. But first of all, we're going to let our commissioners and just a reminder to those of you that didn't hear earlier. Commissioner Whittington had a some kind of an emergency and can't be here. So we'll let our two commissioners that are here give us their report on the state of the county. And then I know some of us at least have some questions about things. So so we will turn it over to either one of you who wants to go ahead and take the first 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 whatever start, I guess that's the word.
Well, I'll go first because you're probably going to have so many questions for Casey that I don't want to keep us here all night. So I'll get mine out of the way first. Case, is that okay?
Absolutely. It's okay JP.
So and please feel free to chime in on anything that I might leave out on any of these topics. You know, we sort of shared a couple of things that I wanted to touch up. I'm sure, you know, we all we try to have, you know, things that sometimes get overlooked. So I don't want to forget anything. So be sure and chime in case if I if I leave something out. So I'm going to give a couple of follow ups of things that have been happening here recently. I mean, I think first of all, I think we're thankful that we're, you know, starting to come out of our, you know, COVID pandemic a little bit, although certainly we recognize we're not out of the woods yet. You know, we we sort of remove the state of emergency designation and, you know, we're, we're starting to see things get a little bit back to normal, but we do have definitely some work to do in the county when it comes to getting vaccines for people. I I know my wife, who is the director at the city health department, had a drive through clinic today at the city. And they were there for three hours and gave one vaccine. So, you know, really unfortunate. We continue to try to keep spreading the words about the availability of vaccines and, you know, hope that we can, you know, raise the percentage of that. I certainly, you know, don't want to see us slip back here. You know, as we get on through summer and move back into the fall. But hopefully, things are getting better. And I know that there have been very, very few fewer and fewer reported cases here recently. So, you know, hopefully, we can put this chapter behind us and and not have to deal with another pandemic like this for a long time. But from the county perspective, when it comes to you know, how it's impacted us, we, I think we're, we're fairly fortunate as soon as we heard the the news of the shutdowns of things. We, you know, we tried to make some adjustments fiscally to prepare for the worst. We expected roughly a 20% decrease in in revenues and resources. And and we actually had sales tax that was significantly higher than it had ever been. So we attribute some of that to probably a lot of people not traveling out of town to go shopping and probably a lot more online ordering, which we're able to capture some sales tax from. And I think that, you know, that's a trend that's certainly going to continue. But, you know, we did have some revenue decreases in some other areas that that weren't as drastic as maybe we're expected. But, you know, our finances, because I think of us trying to be proactive and take action quickly and and also some of the good fortune. You know, we were able to get through that financially. We also started out with about $5 million of CARES Act funds, which helped us with a lot of our expenses for law enforcement and a lot of expenses related to getting personal protective equipment and sanitizers and face shields and Plexiglas in place in various county offices to try to minimize exposure for both our staff as well as for anybody that would be entering into the public buildings. So, you know, we're, we're starting to transition away from some of those things and a lot of those restrictions. But, you know, hopefully, things will get better. So that was a big part of of our last 18 months, as everybody knows. But hopefully, that's better. So some of the things that have happened even while we were kind of through COVID shutdown. We started a process of doing the updating the Ashville County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. That had not been updated since, I believe it was 2003 or 2004. It's a document that sort of sets the standards for land use in the county, you know, planning for the county for development, economic development, green space preservation and development, housing, infrastructure improvements. And it's something that, you know, will probably guide us along for the next decade or two. So that should be completed here by the end of the summer. If you'd like an update on kind of what's going on with that, or you have public input you'd like to share or participate in some of the community engagement portions of that, all in ashdebula.org or dot com. I'm sorry, I don't remember for sure. Is it that all in ashdebula.com is where you can go and find that and and kind of see what's been happening so far. So Jake Brand in our Planning and Community Services Department has kind of taken the lead on that. But there's been a sort of an advisory committee that's spent a lot of time meeting and, you know, working through that process. We also, I know last time we were fortunate enough to come and speak to the league. We talked a lot about broadband service. I'm, I'm very excited to say that the tri-county broadband feasibility study that was has been in the process for the last six months is just at the point of completion. We're just reviewing the draft document now and are going to be receiving a final document and a review on that for all three counties next week sometime. So that was a partnership through our East Gate Regional Council of Governments between us and Trumbull and Mahoning Counties. Trumbull County was going to go and do one of these on their own. And when it came up for discussion, we talked about working collaboratively and trying to put together a plan for the entire region. And it was a lot of great public engagement with that. And we're really excited to see the results, which should help us provide a sort of a guideline and a plan for how we can do broadband expansion in our county as well as the whole region of all three counties and hopefully do it as efficiently, effectively, leveraging the local dollars that we have to get the biggest bang for our buck and matching that up with the appropriate grants that are many grants that are available for broadband infrastructure. So we know, especially in the rural parts of Ashville County, there's a significant deficiency in broadband. And there's several different ways to deploy that technology. We're going to try to evaluate all of them and again, see, see how we can cover the most area and service the most people so that people can have access to to internet appropriate speeds for education, telemedicine, employment, recreation. And, you know, just, just sort of the basic needs that we we find that we rely on our on our technology for today. Um, let's see, what else do we have? I have one of the things that we did last last fall was we refinanced the bonded debt of the county. We had, oh geez, and I forget the exact number, 20 some million dollars, I believe that it was in in bonded debt that was out there. Because rates had gone down so low, we we took bonded debt from numerous projects around the county. Part of it from the lodge, part of it from Job and Family Services, part of it from the nursing home and some other things that we had borrowed some money for. And we were able to decrease the length of time we'll be making payments on that on that debt by two years as well as decrease the overall payment by about, I think it was about a million dollars. So very excited, you know, that we were able to do that and try to do, you know, some give free up some funds and make some prudent fiscal decisions to help with finances for the county. I think the last thing I'm going to touch on before I turn it over to Casey and and I chose this last because I'm, I'm sure Casey's going to have some thoughts to weigh in on. And then it can kind of segue into some of the things he can talk about is the Community Corrections and Rehabilitation Facility project and Criminal Administrative Justice Tax Sales Tax Initiative that we plan to have on the ballot this November. So a couple of things about that project. Our, our jail, our facility currently is is really in deplorable condition. The, the condition of it and the, the resources available from it are just not conducive to meeting today's needs for corrections. It was built in the late 70s. It's over 40 years old. It was built to house 112 people. It's been averaging 150 plus people for a number of years, which has certainly accelerated the deterioration of a lot of the inner workings of the place, the, the plumbing, the the housing quarters. Put up my window here. I got people talking outside. Can't find a quiet place. And we, we have this was actually an initiative that was that began from a previous Board of Commissioners and we sort of picked up the ball from there, trying to, you know, explore solutions and options. We looked at possibly refurbishing the existing facility. The, the estimated cost from small architects was our small engineering to do that was going to be close to $10 million. And doing that would have required us to to come up to current standards for corrections, which would have meant, you know, larger spacing, more windows. You know, other, other different changes would have been required within the inside layout of the jail. And it would have also required us to to close down the jail at least half of it at a time and transport those inmates to another community, pay a daily rate of probably $90 to $100 a day. And then worry about shuttling them back and forth, which is not only a cost, but a security issue. And that wasn't even factored into the the restoration cost. So we the, the modifications would have made the facility only rated for probably between about 90 people. So we would have actually had an upgraded facility, but it would have housed significantly less people, which is one of the struggles that we really have in our community now when we when we have people that, you know, have a mental health crisis or they're detoxing or they've committed a crime that's maybe, you know, been theft or burglary or, you know, possibly something more serious. Unless it's a truly serious and violent crime, they're often just released and then asked to report to a judge, you know, within a certain period of time. And oftentimes, they're not in a state of mind to to do that and certainly to keep themselves safe and oftentimes not others safe from them. So a new facility would address that would allow us to have programming. The, the current facility that we have has one room in the entire building for programming that allows for meeting with mental health rehabilitation counselors, GED classes, AA meetings, religious services, consultations with attorneys and and people that are there and and all every single person is funneled through that one facility or through that one room. And this new facility, we would expect to have like kind of five different housing classifications where you can kind of keep people more with people that have that are in in their situation for similar reasons. And instead of having a person that's a drug dealer housed and eating their their lunch with a with a drug user or a drug addict. And this way you can kind of keep them separated and those that are focused on, you know, rehabilitation and wanting to get better and, you know, maybe just, just maybe starting down a bad path have the ability to not go into a training ground where they may be becoming worse worse criminals. We also only have one mental health and detoxification and observation facility for anybody who may be a risk to commit suicide in our current facility. And, you know, again, if they're coming in in a mental health crisis, if they're coming in and they need to detox, there's, there's really not a way to put them in an environment that is going to help their condition. So, you know, again, we, we want an opportunity to have a facility that that addresses those issues that helps people get into a situation where they can be protected from themselves, protect others from the, from anything that they may be doing that could be dangerous to other folks. But get them a chance to get the proper services that they need and have the ability to bring in programs that will help them get back into society, be productive citizens again. So that's the goal of this facility. And, you know, we're looking to have it presented to the voters. You know, we want to make sure that the community does support this as opposed to trying to to push it through just with the vote of the commissioners. And the, the project would be presented to the voters as a criminal justice only sales tax increase of one half percent. Modification of a half a percent. So that would make us equal to or less than 59 counties of the 88 counties in the state of Ohio. So it would still have us in line with what many other counties do as far as their sales tax. And this additional funding can only be used for criminal criminal administrative justice purposes. It can't be used for any other pet projects of the commissioners or to fund other departments. And it is enough funding in this to not only pay for the construction of the facility, but also to, to make sure that it's adequately staffed because it will require some additional staffing. Our current facility is already understaffed. We don't have enough people really to cover all the shifts. A lot of times people are mandated to work overtime. That has been hard on some of the corrections officers, especially in this environment. And, you know, we have constant maintenance issues currently at the, at the current facility as well. We've put $140,000 into an elevator over the last year and a half, two years that continues to break down. And, you know, just, just many other issues. We could talk forever on this project and we will be going out into the community here in the next oh, month, two months, very regularly to do community engagement meetings. We would encourage you and anyone in the community to come and attend those to, you know, we have a little PowerPoint presentation and a lot more information on this project. And regardless of how people feel about it, you know, whether they're supportive or they choose not to be, we want them to be educated and know the background behind how we got here, what we hope to accomplish with it, why it's needed. And just at least recognize that continuing to utilize the facility that we have right now is really not an option. Doing nothing is not an option on this process because the Department of Corrections in the state is is likely to step in here very shortly if we cannot make some changes and mandate to us what's going to happen, which might not be the most cost effective or the most beneficial thing for us in Ashville County. So we're trying to be proactive and prevent that from happening. So I'll take a breath now and I guess I can, Casey, do you have anything you want to add? Or should I ask for questions on any of those topics or?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak and then maybe we pick up questions. That'll work. Um, so, you know, I, I'll just say ditto to JP on the remarks as it relates to the Community Corrections Project. I think you did an excellent job covering so much about it. I can, I'll provide a little more perspective on it as well. I do want to just also thank the League of Women Voters here in Ashville County for the opportunity that you're giving us here this evening to speak to all of you. I always enjoy the opportunity to speak here at this forum. This is what the sixth, seventh year, I think I've done it. So thank you so much to what you for what you do in the community in terms of providing voter education and forums that provide a great opportunity for us to have dialogue on issues that are relevant in our community. So thank you for that work that you do here in Ashville County. And Commissioner Whittington, as you mentioned, she has a sick grandchild. So she, she takes care of three grandchildren and she's got a sick grandchild. I hear this evening she's tending to. So I'll touch a little bit more on the Community Corrections Project. So much of what JP said is, you know, really the highlight on why we feel that we need to tackle this issue here in Ashville County. You know, and I think he touched on it a little bit, but the current facility, if in fact we were to make improvements, adjustments to that facility that we currently have, it would cost over $10 million to do that. And we'd actually go backwards, not forward. We'd actually lose space. And it would probably cost us much more than $10 million because that's an old estimate on top of the fact that we'd have to transport inmates to other counties and constantly transport them back and forth to be able to attend to court hearings and the like. So that's a frequently asked question about, you know, perhaps what, what can we do to renovate that existing facility? And unfortunately, it's going to be costly endeavor and we're going backwards and we're not going any forward in terms of addressing the needs that exist here in the county. And the other being the site, it's always a great, great question. And we're in the final stages of kind of making that site selection. But as part of the process, we always want to be very diligent of the taxpayer dollar and be mindful of what it costs, you know, the county to obtain property. The moment, you know, you start going publicly, public rather about the sites, obviously that drives up speculation and drives up costs and so on. And that certainly is not something that we want to do and have it play out in the public forum and be paying or overpaying for property as a result of that. So I can't stress enough really the desire for us as part of this endeavor over the next few months for us to educate the public on this project. And really hope that you take advantage of many of the opportunities to learn more. Listen to the PowerPoint presentation that will be exhibited all throughout the county. And we'd even love the League of Women Voters to help us and just provide community education in some way on this project, not asking people to vote yes or no, but we just want people to have the facts so that they can make an educated decision. That is, that is so important. So a few other things that I certainly want to talk about. I always enjoy talking about recycling. That's a, that's a popular topic here with the League of Women Voters. And I know you had, you write a column, I think a month or two ago in one of your newsletters to highlight some of the recycling efforts. In case you didn't get to see that, since 2018, Ashville County, since we restored the recycling program, have been successful in recycling over 3.2 million pounds of recyclables. So that is an incredible number. And thank, thank you. I know many of you here on this call, our participants in the program and you are contributing to that number. So thank you so much for being a participant. And I really have to applaud the residents of this county because the program is doing very well. And it's also doing very well from the perspective of people are recycling the right things. They're not, they're not really putting in garbage and the like. Mind you, that still happens. We've had a few problem sites and we're working to address those. But overwhelmingly, the providers, the service providers are making it clear where these recyclables go, that these are high quality recyclables. So you should be proud of your recyclables. That's, that's a good thing. So that means that those products are being turned into other things and preserving the environment. Here in Ashville County, we're up to 19 sites as it relates to locations to drop off your recyclables. And in case you're ever curious, ashvillecounty.us/recycle has a map of all the sites. So you can certainly view the map there and be able to take advantage of any number of the sites that we have to for the recyclables. Asheville County is one of the few counties left in the state of Ohio that have a glass recycling program. I think I mentioned that quite a bit. Something that we certainly should be proud of the fact that we can still recycle glass, even though the market is, is challenging on that front. Asheville County also hosted a very successful tire collection event. I know Commissioner Ducre and I were both there. We were slinging tires. And it was unbelievable, the number of people that came out. I remember looking up out at the street and looking at all the cars. They were coming from every which direction and I couldn't see an end in sight. It got so bad that a fire and EMS was called out because traffic was blocking many of the roads in town. And there was a fear over emergency vehicles being able to get through because we had so many people participating. So absolutely incredible. And that's exactly why we're doing this program because we want to get those tires off the streets, out of our lake. You know, off of, you know, any number of places where these end up. So we recycled well over 5,000 tires. We're waiting for a final count. But we should be very proud of the efforts there. And finally, we'll be having a hazardous waste collection event in the fall. It's always customary for us to kind of have a tire collection in spring, hazardous waste collection in the fall. So be looking for that date and please help spread the word. As Commissioner Ducre also mentioned, one of the things that we certainly have been doing over the last year, little over a year, is is working our way to climb out of COVID as best we can. And most certainly, while the vaccination rates aren't at the level that we would like them to be, it certainly is good for us to be getting back to a level of normal here in our county so that we can start doing many of the things that, that we like to do. I can tell you, I'm, I'm one of those, you know, that certainly got vaccinated and certainly someone asked me, I encourage them to. Also respectful if someone decides not to, of course, but certainly doing my part to try to get us us back to normal. So one of the things that came as a result of COVID was obviously an opportunity for us to refinance our debt as Commissioner Ducre mentioned. But we also received some CARES Act funds at, at a point last year. And we were able to use some of those funds to assist small businesses, nonprofit organizations here in our county to kind of help get back on their feet to a degree and make up for some of the lost revenue that they experienced as a result of COVID. Many restaurants, retail establishments, to be quite honest, severely cut back their hours or even closed for for an amount of time. So using those funds, we were able to pump some money into our local economy to support those businesses, those small businesses. Also, we're able to use some of those funds to support county operations in a year where we saw some revenue decreases. Now, while we saw revenue decreases on some fronts, such as interest income and casino tax and lodging tax and so on. Our sales tax collection, as Commissioner Ducre mentioned, was record breaking. We actually were just short of $12 million last year. That's a record sales tax collection for our county. Unbelievable that we're able to meet that mark and we're already ahead of last year's collection to the tune of about 13, 14%. So that is, that is really incredible and good to see. And we hope that trend continues. That means that there's a confidence in our economy, I feel. People aren't afraid to spend some money. But I think they're also doing a lot more online and that benefits our county. Most, most ways that you purchase online now require you to pay a sales tax in some way. Where just a couple of years ago, you could go on eBay or in Amazon third party seller and avoid the sales tax. But to a large degree, now you're paying that sales tax. So I think that is certainly contributing to the revenue collection here in the county. One other thing the county has on its mind and will be working on over the coming months is how best to respond to the allocation that we received from the federal government recently as it relates to the American Rescue Plan Act. So Asheville County is receiving just short of $19 million. So that is Asheville County's allocation specifically. That excludes townships and municipalities. They all are getting separate allocations. So we are certainly, I'm going to have a conversation with the coming months. Once it's clear how best we can use these funds. You know, in terms of, you know, what, what are we going to do with these funds and how best to use these in the community to benefit our community? So there's a lot of restrictions on them right now. What's really clear right now and how we can use these is, you know, perhaps some expenses that are related to COVID broadband and water and sewer. That's, that's about the mix of it on how we can use those funds now. But we recognize that that guidance will likely be changing and evolving over the coming months. And we certainly want to make sure that we have full flex, you know, the most flexibility as possible with these funds and try to use it to benefit our community the best it can. Something else I want to talk about is certainly some encouraging developments on the economic development front. I know we've had a conversation before about Petman and I know there's, there's some folks that are passionate about that project. It's encouraging to see that from an economic development perspective, the Petman project is going to restart this fall and allow for that project to move forward. And that certainly is roughly a $500 million project in terms of the economic impact here in our community at the onslaught. And it's going to create several hundred construction jobs, over 100 full time jobs, once it's fully up and operational. So certainly a, a, a project that means a lot to a lot of people here in the county. Also have some great things happening on the lodging front. We got a lot of hotels popping up. There is a hotel popping up at in Harpersfield adjacent to Spire. So kind of in the final stages of completing some of the economic So kind of in the final stages of completing some of the economic incentive work to allow for that project to move forward. The Fairfield Inn Hotel in Austinburg, it's finally got its logo up and it's finally getting its fascia, you know, on the building, all those things. We're hopeful that that opens up very soon to meet a lodging demand that exists here in our county. And we, of course, was encouraging to hear that you're some positive developments. Just yesterday, we heard that some positive developments on the, on the, on the Bridge Street Hotel. So that'll be a, a great thing and hopeful that all that can come together and benefit the Bridge Street area. Really excited about that. And then there's of course, a number of other economic development projects underway in our county. And it's great to see so many of these things back on track now that we're kind of clearing past COVID to, you know, of course, help improve our, our local economy and provide opportunities and help generate revenue to support services we all rely on. Also want to talk a little bit about some legislation that has been in, in the paper of late. I'm sure you read about it and would be happy to speak about this here this evening as it relates to the Geneva Lodging Conference Center. There is some language that is being considered in the state operating budget that would allow for an expedited transition of the Geneva Lodge to the state of Ohio. So currently, as the agreement reads in 2040, that that asset would transfer to the state of Ohio, the Geneva Lodge. And that would only happen after the, the debt is paid on the facility. Currently, as it relates to the original debt that exists on the facility, it stands to the tune of around $13 million. There is a little more debt to that. There were some HVAC improvements made to the facility in the last couple of years as well as some debt that was incurred by the county to complete some renovation of some of the, the rooms at the facility a couple of years ago. So that puts the total to, to the tune of approximately $15 million on what's owed on the facility. Now, I want to make it clear that we fully support the Geneva Lodging Conference Center. They're doing a phenomenal job. Delaware North is doing a phenomenal job. And it is the goal, the idea for all of that great work to continue at that facility. And that really the only thing that changes is the, you know, the plaque at the front of the building that states who, who owns it and who is paying the debt service. This is unique in that this is the only state lodge in the state of Ohio, which is not technically part of the state lodge system and is also not paid for by the state. So this kind of clears up a parity issue and allow us for this transition to occur to the state while preserving an asset we have here in our backyard. There are some concerns that have been brought up of late and I think those are concerns of ours too, that we might most certainly want to make sure that we address in any type of an agreement that would be formulated to allow for this transition to occur. That being, you know, we want to make sure that this facility stays top notch like it is now. So ensuring that investments are being made into that facility on a continued basis, that we're using the resort fee funds. That's the amenity fee that's paid for by guests at that facility, that those funds stay here in Asheville County and are reinvested at the Geneva Lodge. Most certainly, we want to make sure that that happens. And also preserving the great, great relationship that they have with many of the local businesses and wineries and so on. All concerns that we have too, and we want to certainly make sure that as part of any agreement, agreement, which is a provision of this legislation, that the, the state must enter into an agreement with the county, that we have to make sure we're protecting the county's interests, most definitely when doing this. And we certainly will, will do our best to do that, to preserve this asset we have in our backyard, free up some resources to the tune of approximately 1.2, 1.3 million dollars that we could then start to reinvest in other projects here in the county. We've built a strong foundation with this facility. And now I, I feel that we can take that asset and allow for it to remain this tremendous asset we have. And then now use some of the remaining funds that will be cleared up as a result of no longer having this debt burden to tackle perhaps other economic development projects or other endeavors here in the county. Using some of these funds as grant matches to pull down more funds to support projects in our county. So there will be that opportunity with a tune of about 1.3 million dollars on an annual basis to do that very thing. And this will enable us to continue to make the positive progress that we have here in the county. Believe me, we don't want to go backwards. We only want to continue to go forward and this will allow us to kind of take it to the next, you know, take it to the next level. So that's what we really have an opportunity here to do. I would note that the legislation is still pending, not a final deal. So that is certainly still up for debate and consideration in Columbus. And with that, I think that's everything that I had to cover. I know you always have great questions. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to start off because I have some questions. I don't know how great they are, but I have three questions about the jail. What is a new jail going to cost? How many is it going to house? If you're saying that, you know, we now are housing about 150. And what are you going to do with the old jail?
Well, I'll, I'll start with that and then I'll let Casey chime in as well. So the, the cost estimate, we did have an organization called K2M Architects do a, a rendering of a new facility for us. And the cost estimate was approximately 43, 44 million dollars. The, it is, it is constructed to house up to 292 or have 292 beds available. 11 of which would be either mental health or recovery, medical or mental health areas. The, the reality is, is that there's not really an expectation that there will be a need for that. The projection from the folks that did our community corrections, that reviewed our community corrections plan when we had it updated. They estimated that the 292 would be a number likely not needed until 2042, I believe is the year. And they, they walked that back with a projected number of beds that would likely be used every five years. So when the original facility was built, they ran, they, they, it was, it was rated for 112 beds, but they ran out of money during the construction and only finished half of the building. Then when they opened up the second half, because they didn't really have enough resources for it and they needed more space, they ripped out a lot of the individual holding areas and made dormitory settings to allow them to, to bring the number up. This facility is designed to not only meet the needs of today, but well into the future. So that if there was ever a need for additional space, we would certainly have plenty to at least get us to a predicted level in 2042. In addition to that, it's laid out so that God forbid there'd ever be a need to have more space. It's, it's built in a fashion, all on one level that could be added on to and the footprint that's there at a, a much less expensive cost than it would be if you had to tear out walls or put a second story on or do some other modification. So if, if it ever did need to be added on further, it could go up to as high as 450. But the, the structure as it stands would be 292, five different housing classification pods. And each area would have its own programming space and ability to, to do different things like that. The second question that you had, let's see, the first was the cost, the second was how many people. What was the third question?
I wanted to know what you were going to do with the current jail, but I haven't, I know I came up with the fourth question.
That's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm going to let Casey.
So what, what aspect of the question you want me to answer?
What are we going to, what are we going to do with the, what would be done with the old facility?
Yeah. So that's, that's a great question and certainly something on our mind as well. So a few ideas that we're kind of batting around. So if successful with the ballot initiative, we would perhaps explore the idea of moving some of our county operations, recognizing we have some county operations throughout Asheville County. Perhaps there's an opportunity to move some of those operations into the county courthouse campus here in Jefferson. So that is an opportunity. We recognize we can't move everything and that, that there will certainly be space constraints, but there could be an opportunity to move some things. Perhaps there's an opportunity to look at renovating that space and making it open for a public leasing. So for example, if there's any number of entities that are looking for professional space in some way in the county, perhaps this could be an opportunity for them to utilize some great space here in the county seat. Another opportunity could be to actually look at utilizing kind of the structure behind the facility. Knowing that, you know, many of the aspects of the facility will have to change, but perhaps there's an opportunity to, to contract with another treatment provider or service provider that could provide some services that are critically needed here in our county. Whether it be on the mental health, drug treatment side of things, recognizing that we, we kind of have a shell there that perhaps could be preserved and used in a future, future capacity. This could be one opportunity to kind of renovate that space and, and use it in some fashion benefiting our community. So all of those are ideas that we certainly would, would consider as we, as we look at, you know, utilizing that space in some way into the future.
I think it's important to note that I, I don't think there's any plan or intent at this point in time to, to demolish or, or raise the structure. I think the, you know, from the investigation and the assessment work has been done. The, the bones, the shell of the structure is still, you know, in decent enough shape and is, and is usable. It's just really not functional or usable as, as an incarceration facility. And certainly not for, you know, corrections as they are to be carried out today. Where there's, you know, we're trying to find more of an emphasis on, you know, transitioning away from the lock them up and throw away the key mentality to how can we provide services? How can we help people reintegrate back into society and be more productive? How can we, you know, be a, a resource as opposed to leaving people to their, to their own resources to try to, you know, find guidance and to get better and, and, and get through that, much like sort of the change in, in what's happened in education. Where, you know, it used to be that, you know, you were parented at home and you were learned discipline at home and manners and all that sort of thing. And you went to school to get your education. Now I think, you know, I think it's very true. And Lieutenant Kemerly, the jail administrator, who's worked tirelessly on this project says this thing has sort of happened in corrections. You know, many people that are coming through the system have no idea how to address an envelope, how to balance a checkbook, how to prepare a healthy meal. You know, how to, you know, practice just a, a lot of basic things that, that we all probably take for granted that, you know, I think society is in some respects looking on, you know, the government in, in some ways, whether it's through facilities such as this or other, other types of programming to, to provide these services, you know, to, to folks. Cause they're, they're just not going to have the role models back at their, in their environment that they're coming from to, to, to get them back on the right track in many cases. So, you know, that's, 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 I think what's important about the facility, that, you know, we, we still think it has the opportunity to still be a very functional county operation for, for a number of different things or, or even for a private organization. We really need some more treatment and in-house transitional housing for when people, you know, aren't really criminals. They just need more of a space to, to help them get back on recovery. And I would hope that we can find some local providers that don't often have money for infrastructure dollars, but they have lots of money available for programming. You know, we can maybe provide the infrastructure and get, get something like that going there at that facility.
So if this all goes through, you would use some of the local like community counseling and some of those programs that's, that's the plan?
Signature, community counseling, you know, Lark is a program. I don't know if Glen Bay would come in, you know, and there's other providers even from outside the area. And there's outpatient programs, you know, Bright View and Square One, you know, that are currently setting up some, you know, some housing in different areas and some doing outpatient stuff. So I think that what we really want to see is having space to reach out and partner with as many entities as possible to provide as many services as we possibly can.
Anybody else have a question on the jail? Yes, Maggie?
Yeah, I guess my question, and I have to say that in throughout my career, going in and out of that building for various things, the jail is terrible. You know, I, I can attest to how bad, how bad it is. Now, so you're not, just not talking about a jail facility. You're, you're talking about taking the prosecutor's office and the courts. And so you're, this is going to be an actual justice? No, you're just talking straight jail.
So, so we, we are, we are seeking property that has enough acreage to expand. And ultimately our vision would, we, we'd love to see a justice center be created at some point in time. That is something that would not be possible with this initial ballot issue. This facility would be a community corrections and rehabilitation facility, which would replace our existing jail, but have space to do a lot more additional programming and bring in a lot of other resources, as well as house the sheriff's department, dispatch, our cease crime, drug task force and evidence. And Casey, am I missing something else that would be in this facility?
Yeah, no, it'd be all of the ancillary operations of the sheriff. So everything that the sheriff's department under their jurisdiction would move to that facility. Yeah. And, and that includes dispatch. I know Maggie is a former dispatcher over there and yeah, for sure. We need, we certainly need some, some new space and bigger space.
That is the issue of, I mean, they moved them out of the basement, which was horrible over there and, but they did not give them a big enough space. They do not have a big enough space up there right now. They, and they need more dispatchers, but there's no place to house them. So I'm glad to hear that. I just was wondering, so when they go to court, you know, and stuff, they'll still have to transport them back to the, to the courthouse then?
Yes. However, also as part of this facility, the vision is to incorporate much more technology that we can't do right now to be able to do more video arrangements and be able to minimize the movement of inmates as much as possible. Cause we recognize there's a safety risk, as you know, anytime you're moving an inmate. But also the costs, I mean, it's one to two people at all times transporting a person, generally two. And that's going to mean additional costs to move them back and forth. So also the vision is to be able to enter the 21st century and have the technology to allow them to be housed safely, keep the safe, the, the employees safe. But also reduce costs, be more efficient.
It's, it's, that is one of the outcomes of this, of what COVID has created. You know, one of the real benefits is it's shown that we can be very successful with utilizing that technology for video arraignments, court hearings. And they've been able to minimize a lot of that, you know, first under the umbrella of let's just keep people safe and try to prevent the spread of the, of, of the virus. But now we're seeing that it has so many other benefits that hopefully they'll be able to continue to do that regularly and have that be sort of a standard practice.
Well, I'm all for the fact that a new facility needs to be. I, I, I don't know if this is the proper way to pay for it. I, I, you know, I don't know, but I do, I'm definitely for a new facility.
Judge Schroder really deserves credit for that video arraignment idea. He, he brought that to his, his court at the Western County Court. And it, it saved so much in his budget, they were able to purchase an additional computer. And now it's been adopted in Eastern County Court as well as the, some of the common police courts. So. And, and I'll just touch on quickly the, the statement of is this how to pay for it? The, the options that we had to pay for it would be, you know, I, I don't think we have enough borrowing power to have just gone out and borrow the money and try to pay it back somehow. We wouldn't have had the revenue to do that. So it was an option of doing a, a real estate tax where we again go to the landowners, property owners of the county and, and at seek a, a millage levy for a ballot issue. A, a standard sales tax would have been an option. We might've been able to look at an income tax potentially as similar to what Geneva did. But the, the sales tax we thought was, was the route to go, especially if we could specify it for criminal justice only purposes. Because we thought, one, we can, we can assure people to the best of our ability that it will go for that intended use. And two, because our tourism industry has grown so much, we can put the, some of the burden on visitors to our county and lessen that burden on those that are the actual residents of our county. And a sales or use tax, everybody pays it, you know, even. And a sales or use tax, everybody pays it, you know, even the people that are the ones that are, you know, causing the cost increases to our criminal justice system, whether that's in indigent defense, our prosecutor's office, the sheriff's department, the courts. You know, everybody generates sales tax, you know, with the purchases that they make. So it's a little more fairly distributed instead of landing on just property owners or just people that are working.
Okay, I have a question about the broadband you were talking about. And I can't quite remember exactly, but I thought there was some new state legislation about not allowing areas to do their own broadband, that they have to allow companies that are already in business. Am I correct on that? Is that going to be a problem for us?
I, I, I'm honestly not familiar with a legislation that has been that restrictive. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, but I don't recall that being an issue. That may be something that comes out as a part of this final report that we're going to get because it was very extensive to all the aspects of the broadband. One thing I do know is that a lot of money has been awarded to local providers already that are building out their networks. Windstream and Spectrum Charter in particular are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to expand their current networks. I, I have not heard of any restrictions to allowing anybody else new to come in. In actuality, we brought a new provider into the community in Cherry Valley by working with a company called Agile Networks and kind of doing it as a pilot program. We are in the process of getting some equipment installed on the Marx Radio Tower in Cherry Valley. And once that's in place, then they'll be able to, you know, broadcast that signal out in a five to seven mile radius for anybody who has line of sight to be able to access broadband internet in an area that's a pretty significant dead zone down there. So, you know, that never came up that there would be an issue and they don't have a presence in the county. They do have some presence in surrounding counties, but they haven't here before. So I, I don't know that that's the case, but it could be. That's a concern of mine, obviously, because not only do I think it's important for, you know, being able to have access. I think it's important for people to have competition because I also, I think that helps drive the price down. But having an oversaturated market also makes it harder for new investment to get enough customers to offset their investment as well. So I can, I can kind of understand the, maybe the idea behind that. But, you know, there, there's so much money out there right now for broadband. I think you're going to see, you're going to just see multiple investments in different places. I, I think, you know, that's why, what we're really looking to this study for, for trying to strategize the best way to get the biggest bang for our buck and try to get broadband to the most people possible for the least amount of money.
I have a question on the lodge. Would Delaware North not be managing it then?
So actually, yeah, so great question. So actually Delaware North currently is the operator and they have an agreement with the county and that agreement is transferable. To, actually, if the facility changes hands, the agreement also changes hands and transfers to the new owner. So Delaware North is the operator through the end of 2026. And then there's two five-year renewals that also exist as part of the agreement. And I can say from our perspective, we enjoy the relationship with Delaware North and want to see them continue to operate that facility for years to come.
Why do you think the, the wine producers are so up in arms about this whole thing?
So that's a great question. I think it's perhaps because of a slight level of uncertainty and perhaps a non-confidence in the state in terms of running facilities. But I would note that this facility is unique in how it was built, how it was funded. All of those things, and it's going to be unique in how it operates into the future. So I think we have to put a little asterisk by how this facility operates and will operate into the future under state control. Because it is so much different than the other facilities. Probably the most similar lodge, if you've ever visited any of the state lodges, is Miami Bay in Oregon, Ohio. That's probably the most similar, a beautiful facility, just like this one. And I, I think there is that concern that the state perhaps may not do the things that we've been successful in doing and preserving this asset. And that's a concern of ours too. And that's most certainly things that we're going to make sure that we solidify in an agreement to ensure that investments are being made in that facility so that it's well maintained, that the money stays here and isn't sent to Columbus. You know, to be spent on another project somewhere else, that the money stays here. And that this benefits our community like it always, like it has since 2000, since the early 2000s. So.
Whatever is in the budget now, how it's written in the budget. It's, you're going to be able to work with that and not, you're not going to have your hands tied and said, well, you know, the state's going to say, well, it's ours now. Do bad.
So the, the key is there has to be an agreement entered into the county. Now it says shall, so I want to be clear that, but what it's, it's saying is the state shall enter an agreement with the county. So I think it's really encouraging the state to have that conversation because there wouldn't be an incentive for them to do that otherwise. But the county has to, has to formulate an agreement to be signed off by all parties that we're satisfied with. And because there was a little concern over the language and how it was written, you know, last night, that, that there were some concerns exhibited at a meeting in Geneva on the lake. That I, I asked our senator to clarify that language, to make it clear that an agreement has to be entered into. And that this isn't just a blank check. So this has to ultimately, you know, be signed up by the county so that we have our comfort level before anything happens.
I think it's, I, I think it's critical to, to be sure that we do have the protections in place to know that if we're, if we're not comfortable with what the provisions are that are, that we want to put in place to have that long-term protection there at the lodge. That, you know, the, the state doesn't have any authority or ability to just step in and, and, you know, and take over the lodge. I want to protect this asset. I want to see it continue to do great things for our county and for the region. You know, I, I'm a big believer in, in all the great work that Delaware North has done. And I don't want to see that go away. Ideally, I'd like to see a modification in the language that, that states, you know, that we would be able to get the funding for the project. I'm sorry, the funding to offset the debt, to relieve the debt from us. And then, you know, at a future time, it can go back to the state and we can still maintain some local control. But I hate to see us not have the option to, to get out from under the burden of the debt. And, and I, I really just want to make sure that we, we do whatever we can do to still have, you know, as much control to keep the operations in place because they have shown how successful they have been. So, you know, it's a i- i- it's, it's going to be important that we do that. And I think we have to make sure we hold the state's feet to the fire. You know, ODNR's, certainly our senator, to, to make sure that she is representing that need for us.
Go ahead, Ann.
So how, how was this initiated, this idea to turn this over back over to the state?
Sure. It was a legislative idea that was certainly discussed and ultimately discussed with our legislators. And then they had a conversation in Columbus about seeing if that was any possibility to look at that in terms of granting some authority to allow for this conversation to occur to formulate an agreement. And then once the agreement's formulated, because a transition doesn't happen until Jan- to January 1 of 2022, that we'd have a conversation over the next several months with community stakeholders to make sure that some of the concerns could in fact be ultimately put together an agreement to make sure that we're addressing some of the stakeholder concerns and provide assurances that this facility stays as successful as possible.
So if this passes, you're bound to go move forward with it then? I mean, if you're not happy, there's no backing out?
So the key is there still has to be an agreement. So.
I think we're all, I mean, I've seen plenty of state lodges that did not look too great, were well-maintained. I think we're all worried about that. And I know, you know, this, the lodge has a better occupancy rate than the rest of the state parks. I'm, so I'm sure it's not unattractive to the state at this point. I also, I, this is not exactly on topic, but how is the bed tax being collected? And do you guys get bed tax off Airbnb's because they're popping up all over the place?
No, we, we sure do. And Press Commissioner Duke will have more to elaborate because he's the CBB representative. But yes, we do assess a lodging tax and that lodging tax is assessed to all lodgers in Ashville County. So how it works is it's assessed on Airbnb's cottages, hotels. You know, if you've got a few rooms in your house and you're renting them out on a regular basis and so on, you're subject to the income, to the lodging tax and are to register with the county and pay that lodging tax to the county. For Ashville County, that's just short of a million dollars on an annual basis. Excluding some of the communities that assess a lodging tax above and beyond the counties. The county assesses a 5% rate, 3% goes to the county's convention and visitors bureau, 2% goes to the county's CFA. The county's CFA is the convention facilities authority. And that 2% goes to them and they pledge 90% of that to help cover the county's roughly $1.3 million annual debt burden for the lodge. So we use some of the, the lodging tax that's assessed on lodgers all throughout the county to then use it to pay for the lodging facility Geneva on the lake. So that's kind of how that works.
But are, are you actively seeking people that are opening these new Airbnbs? Because it doesn't take too much to open one?
So Jamie, Jamie, Jamie's last name, totally drowned. Jamie, Jamie Arcaro in our office is the Ashville County's lodging tax administrator. And so she, every Friday, she spends a good chunk of her day searching and sort of trolling social media sites and BRBO, Airbnb. There's a couple others out there looking for properties in our county that are being listed. So she's really does a phenomenal job at that. Carl Feather did that for many years prior to her and did a very good job with that. But we actually had two online presentations today with companies that are, that automate a lot of that process and, and, and search, I think, 20 or more different sources that are out there, Craigslist, and they mentioned a couple others that I'd never even heard of before. That have been known to have people list lodging options on. And, you know, so much of it is automated and we are really looking to make an investment in a lodging tax software that will do a lot of this automatically for us. And then make it also easier and more user-friendly for the lodgers that we have in the county to, you know, have their own little portal where they can fill out their, you know, monthly reports. They can pay their, pay their lodging tax online, fill out their forms electronically. And if, if they're not prone to, you know, comfortable using a computer or whatever, we can still accommodate, you know, more antiquated technology of, you know, doing something in the mail or writing a check or bringing cash into the office. But this is going to automate it for a lot of people. And we get regular complaints from people that live out of state that operate these lodging facilities, wanting us to go this route and we just haven't been able to yet. We just started here within the last several months, the ability to actually pay online with a credit card for your lodging tax. This is going to take it to a whole nother level and we hope to have something like that in place by the first of the year, which should not only grow our lodging tax by finding more of the lodgers that are out there, like you said, to make it a little more fair. Because everybody that provides lodging should be, should be paying this or should, they're not paying this. The people that stay at their facilities pay this. But also I think it will help increase compliance with, with those that lodgers that are out there because they'll just be able to monitor it a little bit more closely.
Cindy, did you have a question?
I do. Could you just clarify or tell us again why there's that change in legislation coming up for the lodge when it seems that everything is running fine? So what is triggering the state to look at our lodge and change how we operate Nashville County?
You sort of touched on it and I'll, I'll have you follow up, but I, I know myself personally, when I, I, I don't like, I don't like debt. I know sometimes debt is a necessary evil. But I, I, I like to make sure that if I make an investment in something, if at all possible, I have the resources to, to pay for it. And, and quickly, when I, one of the reasons that I wanted to run for, as a county commissioner, is I wanted an opportunity to try to use what I thought would be, you know, a larger pool of funding to try to make a more impactful stamp on the county. And hopefully there would be some additional discretionary resources. There, there are virtually zero discretionary resources. We really struggle to even have enough money to set enough aside in permanent improvement every year to do the appropriate capital improvements to a lot of the properties that we have. So one of the big burdens on, on dollars that we have from our general fund and from our inside millage that we already levy as a, as a tax on our, what's the, on the $2 transfer fee, the, the, the transfer fee that comes through the real estate department, through the auditor's office. As Casey alluded to, a million plus dollars a year goes to lodge debt on that. So, I mean, I had inquired with, you know, private individuals if they, you know, thought that there was any possibility that they would consider, you know, purchasing or acquiring that. Nobody really seemed to be in a position to, to do that or willing to do that, especially not at the amount of debt that we still owed. In addition to that, the, the, the state of Ohio does not really allow private individuals to operate business ventures on state property, on state park property. So that kind of opportunity disappeared. We even had discussions with Delaware North to see if they would be interested as an organization to consider purchasing the lodge since it's such a successful flagship, flagship facility for them. And we were so pleased with how they handled it. And although, you know, we thought maybe there was a chance if they were interested, maybe we could pursue legislation that would say, you know, can we get an exception to that rule to allow them to operate on the property at the State Park Lodge? And they were not interested in taking on that as an investment. So those are some of the questions that had been asked out there previously, which had come up unsuccessful. I did not really make this ask directly. Casey had, you know, talked about it more with the, with the, with our current legislatures. But I mean, we had talked about ideas and just throwing it out there. I don't really believe any of us thought it was going to be realistically taken up at the state level. I know I was incredibly surprised that they were even willing to entertain the discussion of absorbing $14 million of our county's personal debt. So I am surprised that it's even an option for us. I really didn't take it seriously, but now that that is a potential that it could happen, we have a tremendous responsibility to make sure that we protect our asset. We do everything that's conceivably possible to, you know, make sure that it, it stays the quality facility that it is. And honestly, you know, I was out of town on vacation when the article appeared in the paper that this was going to happen. I was completely unaware that this was seriously going to be considered and accepted in the budget bill. I did not really say anything to some of the people that I feel terrible about now that I hadn't discussed it with because of the way that they found out. But, but I truly thought it was such an unlikely thing to happen that I thought it would be much ado about nothing and we'd probably be stirring up a lot of distress over something that was really likely not to happen. That's my personal reason. I can't speak to really what anybody else's is. But I think how we got to this point is it's just something that we had thrown out as kind of a, I won't say it's a noose around our shoulder, but it's certainly been probably our largest single debt obligation that we face that is funds that we don't have to do, other things that maybe we'd love to do. Love to expand broadband more in Ashville County. I, I wish we had matching dollars to be going after these two and three million dollar grants that have been out there for broadband for the last several years from the USDA, but no money. So that's just one potential. That also has an economic impact. Not that tourism does not, tourism is a crucial component to our community. But if we can't get our broadband access expanded either, that's going to be, you know, how do we expect to get, you know, young residents that are tech savvy, that are working in industries, making, you know, significant monies to come and invest and buy homes here and to work from home. Businesses to expand our agricultural community to be able to access the most current technology. So, you know, that's just, that's just one. So you know, that's just, that's just one thing that we haven't had money in the past to make investments in.
I think JP covered so much of it and, and from my perspective, um, I view it as an opportunity. And that opportunity being to allow for the strong foundation that we've built for this facility. To pass on to um, uh, the legacy of, you know, of Ohio as it relates to um, their uh, operations of the facility. This is the only state lodge in the state of Ohio that's run by the county. Is a state lodge and ultimately will go to the state of Ohio. So um, this seems logical that a state lodge would be run by the state. That, that, that seems to be a, a very logical thing uh, for, for that to um, to be. And, and ultimately though, since uh, this is in our backyard and we have a vested interest. In allowing for this facility to benefit our community, we are going to want to make sure that we protect those interests. Or we don't do this. Um, we don't sign on the dotted line as it relates to the agreement to ensure that uh, we're protecting this asset. That we've built a strong foundation on here in our community. Um, and by doing that, we allow for this uh, tremendous asset to stay here, thrive, succeed. And now we have some freed up resources to tackle the next economic development project in the county that we want to work on. To continue to move our county forward.
Do you have a question Cindy?
Ms. How, I just want to say that, that being said, I, I certainly believe that we need to uh, to continue to seek. With the state and with the Senator, the opportunity for us to get our debt relieved, if at all possible. While we still maintain as much control as possible. I, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that. The goal for us is to really to help get the debt relieved um, and take that burden off of our local taxpayers specifically. And um, you know, still have the ability to do other projects, so.
Maggie, do you have a, a question?
Hasn't the lodge been um, uh, since two thousand eight, ha- hasn't it started making money? I know for, you know, a few years there it didn't, but isn't it now making money?
Well, the lodge, the, the lodge, I'm sorry, go ahead Casey.
No, go ahead. No, you, you were on the right track. Go right ahead.
Whenever they talk about the lodge making money, the lodge does turn over a profit every year to the county. I mean, not every year, so it, it, we, we paid interest only on a lot of the debt and it made no money for, for a number of years after it was opened. But in the recent history, the, the, the profit of the lodge has grown. But the profit of the lodge is determined after operating expenses. The um, uh, uh, management agreement uh, to Delaware North is paid. But it never calculates any debt. So when it says we might make three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand dollars a year. That never takes into account any debt service on the money that it costs to pay for the mortgage to construct the lodge. Or the loans that were taken out to improve the lodge. So I, I just um, I, I, I just, it's a little deceiving to say that the lodge is making money. We're grateful that it's making money and we're, that it's um, that it's turning over money to the county every year. But to say that it is making money for the county, it's still falling far short of the uh, debt service that is owed. And we have to pull from numerous sources to help to pay that debt. That being said, the lodge is one of the greatest investments that I believe this county ever made. It served its function. It has served its function. It is serving its function as an economic development driver. It has been a great springboard for countless other local businesses and has been incredibly successful. And I think it was a great investment that was a big point of controversy for a long period of time. So um, you know, it's, it's there. I, I have nothing negative to say about the lodge. Uh, again, I just think, you know, that the lodge needs to stay in place. Uh, it needs to continue to be successful. I would just love to be able to relieve the county of the debt service that it's still burdened with because of it.
Pat, did you have a question? Pat Simpson?
No.
Okay, you're unmuted. My only other question is, is we've been concerned over the last few months about Brian being used on the roads. That that's uh, something that's been talked about. Are you keeping your eye on that? I certainly hope.
I, 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 I certainly am. Um, and I know this is a conversation we've had a few times, I, I believe in this forum. Uh, and most certainly, um, I am not a fan of the fact that on top of that. Um, Ashville County's been a dumping ground for this hydraulically fractured waste. Um, that is generated by a lot of the drilling and it comes into our county. You know, you could argue it's caused earthquakes and the like, uh, you know, in many of our communities, not a fan of it one bit. It's a necessary byproduct of, of drilling in, in this state. But I kind of have an issue with um, you know, Ashville County seeming to get um, quite a bit of the waste. Uh, and maybe not as much of the benefit. So uh, no question about it. And also as it relates to on the roads. Uh, yes, I'm not aware of many communities that do that. Uh, I'm sure there perhaps are a few out there, but. None have been brought to my attention of late, um, where it's, where it's been an issue. But if it, it is, definitely reach out to us, let us know so that we're aware of it.
I've been asked about it a couple of times, Mrs. Howe, and whenever I have and, and been asked about where it's, where this is happening at. When I've reached out to the trustees or the road department people in those communities. They have all, you know, they've insisted that that is not the case, that they are not using those products. So if there's a belief that that's continuing to happen uh, in certain areas and we need to bring somebody else in. To, excuse me, to independently um, you know, look into that. You know, again, we're, I'm happy to do so. Um, you know, again, that's not a product that we, uh, we need to be. You know, releasing into our streets that are then getting into our streams and rivers and water supply. And um, you know, not, not a proponent or a favor, in favor of that at all.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, yes, I have too.
Oh wait, okay, go ahead Lou, then.
Okay, um, this is sort of uh, going back to the jail uh, funding situation. Uh, I understand perfectly well how you arrived at um, deciding on the sales tax. But um, when Catherine Whittington ran in twenty sixteen, she was specifically asked about uh, a, a new jail. And you know, she was on board with that obviously. And then she was asked how it would be funded. And she said, well, I have a lot of experience as a grant writer, so grants would be what we pursue. And then when she was questioned as to what further would come down the pike to fi- finance it. She said, well, state and federal funding. At no point did she ever mention uh, that, you know. As a commissioner, she would consider local funding. So my question is, uh, were any grants done by the commissioners? To try to obtain uh, some grant money to maybe cover some of the costs associated with building a jail? And also was there any effort to obtain state or federal funding? And um, you know, are those three viable w- ways to uh, fund something? You know, such a project like a jail?
So absolutely. I don't know if JP, you want me to answer that? So if you, you want to, but.
You go first.
Okay, I'm so glad you asked that question because we neglected to mention that earlier. Absolutely, we're seeking state and federal funding. So just today, we were working on a grant application. Uh, the state of Ohio ha- has fifty million dollars statewide and they made an appropriation. Um, in the last Capitol bill, uh, we are applying for um, all of it. We're asking for all fifty million. We know we're not going to get fifty million. But we're asking for all of it um, to assist with this project. So absolutely, um, we are exploring that grant opportunity. Uh, we also are supporting legislation that's currently being sit, considered in Columbus. That would actually set up a funding model similar to that of the Ohio School Facilities Commission. Um, that was utilized many years ago to build new, uh, many of the new schools. Throughout the state of Ohio, there's roughly one point three billion dollars in, in um, jail projects that counties need to tackle throughout the state. And they recognize that. So there is um, uh, talk in Columbus about creating this program. Where perhaps some of the more poor, poorer counties get more of a state um, a kind of contribution. More of the wealthier counties that have the ability to generate local revenue uh, would perhaps get less. So we are in full support of that legislation and that is being considered in Columbus. So that's another opportunity perhaps for some state support. Um, we are also um, seeking um, every Capitol bill, we are seeking state capital dollars to assist with our project exclusively. Uh, for this facility. Uh, most definitely, we want to see if we can get as much state help as possible. Uh, above and beyond um, the few that I just mentioned. And we are also looking at some federal funding. And, and this is to a point that Commissioner Duke wrote mentioned that um, we don't need all the beds initially. And perhaps there's an opportunity to utilize some of the surplus beds um, to uh, pull down some federal resources. To allow for X number of beds uh, to be used to generate some revenue um, to be able to offset the local contribution for the facility. So that is an o- an opportunity for perhaps fifty beds over a period of ten years. Um, that could be ten million dollars. And that could be an opportunity to bring that project suddenly from forty-three to thirty-three. Um, we are also very anxious to see um, as part of the revised guidance with the stimulus funds, to see if we can use some of those funds. Perhaps we could use ten million there. That becomes twenty-three. And then we get some state help. That, does that become, you know, a fifteen million dollar, ten million dollar obligation locally? Then it becomes much more feasible. Uh, but what will put the county in a great position is the fact that. When this issue is voted on and the voters decide, if the voters uh, decide to support this. This would be an opportunity to support a local match um, for uh, some um, state and federal dollars to be pulled down to assist in this project. Um, and then if that's the case, uh, we don't need all those funds. Um, that tax can be rolled right back and go right back to the taxpayers. So uh, most certainly, um, I'm so glad you brought that up. We're going to seek out every possible dollar um, that we have uh, to assist in this project.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, I have one other question. Um, I looked at the county uh, commissioner website today. And I noticed there's been no update on minutes or agenda since the beginning of February. Is there any reason why that there's such a lag there?
You know, it's a great question. I will bring that up with our clerk. Um, I haven't checked on that site. But I will bring that up with our clerk. I'll send her an email right now and uh, see what's going on there. She's generally been very good about getting those updated. Um, but we'll make sure that those get up.
Okay, thanks.
Anne, I think you had a question yet?
I just, Ms. Howe, I, I had one, one thing, I, I think just because I don't want to get caught up in the semantics. I, I think the, I think the discussion today case, I, I think I recall Catherine saying that the amount requested. Was going to be thirty-two instead of fifty, because that was more in line with what uh, uh, what the expense for the construction specific was going to be. But I just didn't want there to be a, an, an accuracy about that, if, if I recall, unless that changed after I talked to Catherine. But I thought when she was talking about reviewing that um, on the uh, to the, to the state grant. And, and you're right, it doesn't matter whether we ask for fifty or thirty-two or twenty, I think we'll be very fortunate if we get a couple million dollars, but we'd love to get everything we could get.
Anne?
I've, I have two things. One is, like, I, it's my understanding that in the state budget, they were going to be cutting some funding for broadband. Expansion and I wondered how that was going to affect us. And then the other thing is more of a, of a comment, and if you want to s- say something about it, but I wanted to, it's a concern that happened. And I think, you know, we are all, I think what happened on January sixth all put us a little on edge and. It brought me back to when we had the Black Lives Matter protests, or it wasn't even a protest, it was a gathering in Asheville city. On that day, down a park, down at Point Park in the harbor. Five guys wearing full camo and carrying AR fifteens spent a couple hours standing, standing around at the point. And when my neighbors asked them, like, what, what are you doing? They said, we're here to protect the harbor. So that did not make me feel protected. But I felt, you know, very uneasy about that. I wondered if you have encountered any. Under co- current of that in the county.
Same thing in Jefferson happened that day too.
I can tell you, I haven't experienced, uh, yes JP.
No, no, you go ahead Casey.
So I can tell you that I have not experienced that in Ashville County um, uh, to, to my knowledge. Most certainly. Um, and I can tell you right now that uh, I um, called out publicly um, what happened there um, at the Capitol. Most certainly not appropriate, uh, no question about it. Um, absolutely um, unacceptable. Uh, what happened to that day um, as it relates to um, Americans storming the Capitol. You know, uh, it just, uh, just unbelievable. Um, and uh, and immediately when that, that certainly happened. I was quick to call that out. It was absolutely unacceptable.
And, and I'll just uh, say that, yeah, I was aware that there was something in Jefferson. That's the first I'd heard that anything was um, happening like that at the point. I, I, I know that I had several entities on Main Avenue reach out to me. You know, asking about, you know, closing up their business, boarding up their windows. You know, stationing somebody out front with a firearm. You know, my, my encouragement to them was put a sign out that says, you know, Black Lives Matter. Put some bottled water out there and uh, let people know that uh, you are a hundred percent in support. Uh, of any type of a peaceful protest um, where people are seeking an opportunity to have. You know, social justice or uh, um, you know, equality and those sort of things. I think that is uh, the, the best thing that we can do to disarm uh, and, and, and reduce. Uh, the likelihood of a situation becoming hostile. You know, I attended that gathering. I thought it was wonderfully done. When they had the peaceful protest in North Park, I thought it was something Ashville should be very proud of. And I think it is a model for things that we can do in the future and says a tremendous amount about our community. Where law enforcement came together, was supportive of that uh, event as well. There have been numerous things in the community that have happened since then that are engaging. You know, various members of the community, law enforcement participating. Uh, Octavia Harris doing racial justice Zoom meetings with uh, uh, with numerous people from throughout the communities. Having um, you know, recognitions together to support first responders. With, with other folks, the Juneteenth celebration last year and this year that we just had, were both very successful events. So, you know, I um, uh, I, I always think it's tragic when you hear stories of those things occurring. Um, and I think our community should be very proud of itself for the steps that we take. To uh, to, to try to prevent anything like that from ever happening here. And, and hopefully, nothing like that happened at the Capitol ever will happen here.
I do see something, I'm just looking in the state budget that there's talk of uh, taking out any funding for broadband. The Senate cuts broadband from budget.
Um, I, I will say that I, I have not heard any specific decisions on that. That may be a modification. Even if the state takes out some funding, obviously that would be uh, one less avenue that we could pursue. But uh, we, we certainly have, um, there's several different programs through Appalachian Regional Commission and art grants. Uh, there's uh, there's, there's some federal different programs out there through the USDA. Um, and, and part of the um, part of the broadband feasibility study is going to be. Uh, identifying the, the programs and grants that are available and helping us prioritize the ones that we have the most. The best likelihood of um, you know, acquiring and, and sort of help us strategize and prioritize which ones we go after.
It's, it says that they don't want government entities to be competitors in the commercial market. Kind of sounds like the broadband providers kind of got to somebody and said, don't let, you know. Local agencies do this because there evidently are some towns or communities that have done their own broadband and.
Well, the problem is, the problem is, is that the independent uh, entities themselves won't do it. They refuse to make the investment to go one more house down the street to get people broadband. If we had making the investment themselves, a lot of them receive some federal dollars to make improvements. And provide promises that they're going to deliver a certain level of service, which. In many cases, doesn't happen with the, with regularity. And uh, that's something that we have to put a stop to.
Okay, are there any other questions? If had to hear for a long time.
I just have one other comment, if I could uh, sort of piggyback on what was mentioned. You know, what happened uh, Janu- January sixth. I noticed last year that you were approached by a citizen asking for a resolution in support of the constitutional second amendment. And over a period of time, you then um, did issue that resolution. Would you be on board then um issuing in support of the twelfth amendment? And a condemnation of what happened on January sixth? Would the commissioners be willing to issue a resolution on that?
Uh so I will say, um I I can only speak for myself. I mean, it's certainly a matter that could be brought before the commissioners for a discussion. Uh but I would note that um obviously this happened in January of this year. Um and I would turn you to my statements um that I publicly shared both on Facebook, Gazette and the Star Beacon, uh calling out the acts. Um uh there in January. So I know question, um I've already done that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all de- decried that uh that particular act. I I I, you know, I'll be happy to take it up in discussion. I'd have to read the language of exactly what's in the twelfth amendment. I'm not familiar with everything that it states. Um um but you know, again, I I I. I I think we're have been clear in that that was a um, you know. Unacceptable act by the people that took that uh that 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 did what they did. And so, you know, I can uh. I I I can't say whether I would without, you know, having a discussion about it. I guess really looking at what what all's involved there, what what you were seeking, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, like I said, I think we've held you here longer than we had planned originally, but uh we certainly appreciate all of your answers to our questions and uh. All the information. Um I suppose you're not gonna tell us where the jail's gonna go, so I guess we'll we'll that will proceed that. You know, proceed with that question.
Very close.
Yeah, good. Well, those of us in Jefferson would like to see some, you know, taxes stay here, so one way or another.
And know that that will certainly be shared um well before the the sales tax issue is placed on the ballot, so you can inform decision.
Sure, sure.
And and it's absolutely being sought in the Jefferson area, so it would not, um you know, it wouldn't be uh. It wouldn't be far from where it would be currently located, wherever we decide.
But then somebody locally said, well, Jefferson will just rezone and suck them in, so so you get the uh city taxes. So we'll we'll see. We'll wait and see how that all goes. So, all right, well, I certainly want to thank you very much. Uh we certainly appreciated hearing all the information, answering all of our questions. Um it it's been uh very interesting as it always is and hopefully this will continue over the years and we can continue to meet with you or whoever. Is are our commissioners and uh know what's going on in the county. It's certainly important. Maggie, Maggie has her hand up. Are you raising your hand or clapping? Oh, you're clapping, okay. Never sure what that symbol means. Thank you so much and uh we hope you enjoy your your meal at um. Yeah, J-Town, I dropped off some gift certificates for you the other day, so.
That's very kind of you. We always enjoy eating over there and thank you again for having us and, you know, I I don't, I, the. One thing I guess I really want to make clear is that regardless, uh a- anytime you guys have questions, I hope that you don't ever think that you need to wait until we're invited to come back to a league meeting. So please feel free to reach out, call us, stop in our office, send us an email, um you know, connect with us. I think you all know how to do that. Anytime and we would be happy to uh to discuss any issues that you're uh interested in talking about.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it all.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Members and uh we'll see you another time.
Have a great day.
You too.
Bye.